Good evening, everybody. We will be getting started. Thank you very much for coming. I call this city council meeting to order of October 8th. And the very first thing on our agenda is the open forum. So, welcome everyone to the city of Richfield. We did have staff circulating little cards just talking about the open forum process. But to just review the process for folks who may be new to the city council, we ask folks to please sign in with... Is there a staff person that has the cards for the open forum process? Blanca has them. So, please find Blanca. If you haven't signed your card and you'd like to come and speak, the open forum process is at the beginning of our council meeting and it's an opportunity for anyone from the public to come and address the council on any items that are not on our council agenda. It won't be a discussion back and forth. It is just for community to come and for council members to listen. And we do ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes. And then I will call everybody up one by one based on the cards that I have handed to me from Blanca. And I will ask you to please state your name and your address and then make sure that you sign in with your name and the address over at the microphone. So, the first person we have is Jody Johnson. If Jody Johnson can please come up to the microphone? And then you can go over here, Jody. And then you can just turn the button on and the microphone will turn on. Thank you, Chief.
Hi. I'm Jody Johnson. My address is 7339 Pillsbury Avenue South in Richfield. I've been a Richfield resident for 24 years. I'm also an adult mental health case manager and did child protection for 15 years before that. So, I'm very familiar with families in crisis. I came tonight because I was very concerned and saddened by the recent shooting and had some questions about how it was handled and how things might be handled in the future. I wondered why non-lethal means were not used and why there was no attempt to de-escalate before Brian was shot. And also had several housekeeping questions, wondering if Richfield officers are required to take crisis intervention training, if there is a plan for them to purchase body cameras and use them in the future, and if they are planning to have any embedded mental health staff like they do on pilot programs in Minneapolis and St. Paul right now. I think that the perspective from mental health is very different from the perspective that people are taught in law enforcement and I think that they would benefit from training as far as dealing with situations that deal with mental health emergencies. I know in my job, I choose very carefully when I do and do not involve law enforcement because I know that they are trained differently and they may choose to use lethal force. And I am trained to do the best I can to support my clients and make sure that they get the help that they need. So, unless it's absolutely necessary, I won't call in law enforcement. And I would not personally call in law enforcement for any kind of a mental health crisis for a family member because of concerns such as this, that I don't feel that there's adequate training and that the paradigm that they're working under is very, very different. I'm concerned that it seems that the attitude is to eliminate the threat rather than to engage the human being. And that really saddens me. Before I left today, my husband, who is a metal worker and is a man of very few words and never speaks in public, said, "Go tell them to quit shooting people." And that's a big deal for him because he rarely talks and doesn't have a lot to say in public forums. So, I guess I would leave you with that, that I would like to see some alternatives explored so that we don't have more of this in the future. And I would like to see our Richfield residents seen as human beings and dealt with and engaged with rather than dealt with in a reactionary way that ends up with someone being lost and a family being devastated and a community being very deeply impacted. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. The next person I will ask up is Amber Allen.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Amber Allen. I live at 6112 Clinton Avenue South, Minneapolis. Although I am just one block across the border, I do have part in this community as far as my children. One child's still at a 10th school here in Richfield and my second child has already graduated here from Richfield. I am here tonight in support of the Quinones family. I do...I guess I'm also here for my own selfish reasons to ask the council about the mental recovery PTSD counseling the officers involved in the tragic death of Brian have received. I'm concerned that the city of Richfield is in fact not safer with these officers returning within two to three weeks of this incident. It's really disheartening. I mean, how can you justify putting these officers back on the street without resolve of the mental issues that they must be going through? I don't feel the community is safe with them back on the street. For my children, that is why. The second issue that I would like to address is I follow the community page of Richfield. I am invested in the city. Members of this panel have been on social media advocating for hotel expenses for a homeless woman with a cat. I get the importance of that. Where is the advocacy for this young man? This 12-year-old young man who has been couch hopping since September 7th? He has been going from place to place along with his now widowed mother because they no longer feel welcomed or safe here in this community. They resided here happily until the death of the young man's father. I'm just really appalled at the city of Richfield that it's not coming together as a community that I expected. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allen. I would like to welcome up Don Williams to the dais or to the microphone, excuse me.
My name's Don Williams and I live in the state of Minnesota. I'm here tonight because of what happened to Brian Quinones and my family. I'm here with questions unanswered and with the treatment of this family, the way it's gone since that happened, and statements of wanting to be transparent sitting as false claims from the police departments involved to this family. Why must this family suffer more at the hands of law enforcement on this issue and the investigation? Why, after a month, can Ashley not get the car she owns and makes payments on back from the police? Why have they not completed the death certificate after a month? I was told, and Ashley has been told, that this investigation could go on for as long as two years. Why? They have had the car Brian was driving for over a month. You mean to tell me they haven't done all they forensically need to do with that vehicle by now? Why can't she get the keys to their apartment back from the police instead of having to pay $150 to the apartment complex? And it's part of an ongoing investigation's crap and it don't cut it. I want to know who has answers for these questions. Certainly not the police departments involved. Four out of the five officers involved in this shooting are back out on the streets. How safe do you think these members of your community feel? Where and how does this neanderthalic notion to not use body cams in our world today fit into logic in Richfield, Edina, or any police department not using them regularly? One Richfield officer wears a body camera because he's a cop in constant trouble. Otherwise, they don't use them. You wonder why people question your ethics and your practices? Because you aren't transparent and your practices support confusion, disbelief, and additional grief. As Richfield and Edina are two communities entrenched in Hennepin County who's conducting this investigation, we want answers from community members. We want some advice or assistance in helping this family try to move forward. You know, it'd be nice if there was some kind of community outreach that has resources to help in these capacities without the family having to call and continually get redirected or led to people who can't help us. The time for silence is pat. Shooting Brian 16 times by five police officers was, and no pun intended, massive overkill and it's homicide. To sit idly by and let the media espouse police rhetoric about this young man is another case of injustice. Therefore, I call on the two communities involved, Richfield and Edina. The people that make up these communities, challenge the practices and policies of police work in these horrific and tragic situations as we are doing in our pursuit of justice for Brian Quinones. And think of this. Don't ever think this can't happen to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. William. The next person is Shara Blanch. And Blanca, I just want to check, were there any additional cards? Is there anyone else that is here to speak? I can ask after Ms. Blanch comes.
My name is Shara Blanch. I will not be sharing my address as I don't believe it's safe to do so. I'm here to speak about the murder of Brian Quinones on September 7th, 2019. The current state of policing in our country is abysmal. Police use of force is the sixth leading cause of death for men ages 25 to 29. Brian was 30, just over that age. Brian was shot mere seconds after exiting his car. The 16 shots heard on the video of Brian resulted in the death of a man who has a family. He has a wife, a 12-year-old son, a brother, a sister, a mother, a father, cousins, many other family members, and many friends. They are left to try to understand how this happened to Brian. He and his wife have been together for over half their lives, since they were 13 years old. In fact, I attended their wedding reception five years ago last weekend. He was an involved father who spent time with his son and did everything he could to ensure that his son had a better life than he did. That's something that all of us who are parents want for our children and Brian was no exception. Brian worked for General Mills for over five years and was so loved by the company that many managers and executives attended his funeral. Brian was often known for giving away the last few dollars he had to ensure that people experiencing homelessness had a meal for the day. That is the Brian his family knew and officers of the city of Richfield stole that from them. I demand that the city of Richfield release all of the video footage of all of the squad cars that were at the scene that night. These videos are data of the city, not Hennepin County, not the city of Edina. You do not need anyone else's permission to release this data. I demand that all of these be released within the next week and that Brian's family have the opportunity to review the videos prior to them being released to the public. Videos of an officer-involved shooting in St. Paul that occurred a week after Brian was murdered have been released. This family deserves that as well. The officers who shot Brian must be fired. I have had personal experiences with Officer Joseph Carroll from my involvement in actions with the Richfield School Board in 2017. In the months after the school board actions, I was pulled over multiple times for minor offenses, like a taillight that was out. That sounds awfully familiar, doesn't it? And for not using a turn signal at 11:00 PM, making a left-hand turn from a left-turn lane. Officer Carroll was awfully bored that night. Or he was mad that I was standing up for what was right. Additionally, my house was cited for multiple code violations. These things stopped when I contacted Chief Henthorn and told him that they needed to stop or I would be filing harassment charges against the police. These officers cannot be trusted to keep all community members safe. As the mother of a black teenage son, it is not safe for my son to be in this city, the city that I was born and raised in. I have lived here my entire life. I actually went to elementary school with Councilmember Troutman. The city of Richfield has fired officers for non-deadly force. These three officers must also be fired. The city of Richfield will encourage and fully cooperate with the Hennepin County Attorney in pressing criminal charges for the city of Edina and the city of Richfield officers who shot Brian. These officers had many options that they did not utilize and their failure to do so resulted in the death of Brian Quinones. The city of Richfield will support second-degree murder charges. This will not bring Brian back, but it will allow for some closure for the family and for the community. The city of Richfield will implement body-worn cameras for all officers beginning in January of 2020. When I was on the Human Rights Commission, former Assistant Chief Mike Coob gave a number of barriers to body cameras, including cost and data storage. Other cities in Minnesota, including Minneapolis and St. Paul, have overcome these barriers. Richfield can too. As a taxpayer in Richfield, I want my taxpayer dollars spent on that. Richfield Police has a long history of excessive force towards people of color. Body cameras are necessary in order to hold officers accountable for their actions. We know they don't tell the truth. Lastly, Chief Henthorn. I emailed you this weekend. You have not provided a response to my email. The email was asking for information about Officers Schultz and Staria, where they are working and why they have been booked back to work. It is important for the community to know if these officers are on the street or if they are on desk duty. Because if they are on the street, this community needs to brace itself for the possibility of another instance like what happened to Brian Quinones. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blanch. Blanca, did you pick up any other cards? Nope. Are there any other community members here that would like to speak at the open forum? Yes. Please come to the microphone and if you can write your name and address and state your name and address as well.
I don't feel safe writing my address as well, but I'll write down mine. So, first I would like to introduce myself. My name is Deanie Aiden. I'm the brother of Isaac Aiden, who was shot and killed by five police officers in Eagan, Minnesota on July 2nd, 2019. And today, I'm just here to stand in support with Brian's family. And I just want to give you guys a bit of experience knowing firsthand how this situation impacted me and my family. So, when we hear that our loved ones have been killed by police, we don't have any time to grieve and we immediately go into fighting for answers. And the last three months, the amount of times our rights have been violated, we had to wait three months just to get public information. And just like in Brian's case, within three days, all the officers returned to work. Two of the five officers that killed my brother previously killed someone else and there's a ton of disciplinary records that they have on file that we were denied access to for months. So, I'm just here today to express the family's concerns and ask why is Ashley's car still being held? She found out her husband was shot and killed and you guys are denying her her car. The family's not getting any support. The family's getting absolutely nothing and they have to waste their time, come to these kind of meetings, protest, just to get basic answers. Minnesota state law allows the owners of that data to make any private information public if it helps with unrest, the law enforcement process, or dispels wide rumors or dispels wide rumors. So, you guys have the authority to release all footage at any time you guys want. The reason my brother's body camera footage hasn't been released yet is the city manager of Bloomington told me that although we protested multiple times, our unrest was nothing like Ferguson. So, when we have peaceful protests, it's not enough to get the basic information that we're demanding. And when situations like Ferguson occur, we're seen as criminals and dehumanized. So, today, it's not about what's right and what's wrong. It's having humanity and just showing the family that you guys honestly care. Because we put you guys in positions like this so you guys can help the community. This is the community coming out to you guys and demanding answers. The family should be having time to grieve, but they're out protesting and just trying to get basic answers. So, we all know what happened to Brian was wrong, but you guys can correct that. Nothing we ever do is going to bring Brian or my brother back. But what you guys can do is prevent situations like these by having body cameras. Minnesota is on a record year this year. We have over 20, 22, 23 lives at the hands of police and it's not even the end of the year yet. We're on a record year and there's nothing being done. We're seeing the same situations play out. Brian's scenario is not an isolated incident and unfortunately, if nothing is done, more people will end up like that. So, today, I'm here in support with Brian's family as well as fighting for justice for my brother, but I'm also here fighting for justice for myself. Because if I get shot and killed by an officer, I want that officer to be prosecuted. If my friends were killed by officers, I want them to get prosecuted. There's no transparency throughout this process. So, you guys have the power to do what's right and I hope you guys make the right decision unlike Bloomington. So, you guys can be leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aiden. Is there anyone else here today who would like to speak in the open forum? Yes, please come to the microphone and if you could write down your address and state your name.
My name is Samaya Aiden. I'm the older sister of Bachelorette Dean Aiden and my address doesn't matter because I actually live in Los Angeles, California. So, what brings me back to Minnesota is because our older brother, Isaac Aiden, was killed on July 2nd in Eagan, Minnesota by Bloomington and Eagan officers. Just to tell you a little bit about my brother, he was a college student at the University of Minnesota. He's 23 years old. He was supposed to graduate with his IT and infrastructure degree this semester. He was a business owner who, he created Aiden X Home Care, which was his own home care business. In addition to that, he was a banker who worked at Spire Credit Union. My brother had everything going for him and he was still turned into a statistic as a black man who was not able to reach the age of 25. He was killed by police officers and like my brother mentioned, the officers that killed him were back on the job within the first three days. Like he also said, two of the officers have previously killed before and one of them, their Police Officer of the Year, has three lawsuits filed against him. The night that Brian was killed, when I heard that Bloomington police officers were there to assist, I could not help but wonder, was Anthony Keel there? Was Dan Nelson there? Was Matt Ryan there? Those officers that killed our brother, were they back? They were back on the job. Were they at the scene for him? Because besides being a police officer, I can't think of another profession where you are allowed back on the job, allowed back in the streets while under investigation for murder. We all know, like my brother said, what happened to Brian should never happen again. No one deserves to be killed by police and especially people dealing with mental health crisis. Instead, they should be receiving help. When police officers are dispatched to help someone in a mental health crisis, they are there to help, not kill. That is their job at that point. So, when you kill someone on the job regardless, you have passed your jurisdiction. That's not what you signed up to do. That's not what our tax money goes to. With Ashley's car being still held by the Richfield and Edina police, that same thing has happened to our brother. We had to fight with the BCA, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, and as well as Eagan and Bloomington to get our brother's car back. After data request forms, after data preservation letters, after protesting at the Eagan Outlet Mall, after shutting down Highway 13, we were finally able to receive our brother's car. And with that continues to happen with, we continue to get harassed. We get followed by police cars with all of their lights turned off at night just following us. We still continue to get harassed, but we shouldn't have to be fighting for, to get our property back. There's an, our houses and our cars are our property. That's our safe space. Ashley deserves to have that. She just lost her husband. Her son just lost his father. So, instead of, in speaking with a lot of families of police, of victims of police shooting, a lot of us don't get any time to grieve. Right after our loved ones are killed, we go straight to demanding answers. We go straight to fighting to figure out what is going on, to figure out how we can get our cars back, to figure out who these people are, what the situation is. I was in Los Angeles when my brother was killed. I'm here now in Minnesota fighting for him as well as now Brian, as well as all stolen lives. I'm a 21-year-old college student who had to quit her summer classes, who had to drop her summer classes because of this. Not only did this situation prevent my brother from graduating, but I have to now not be graduating on time. But with what my brother said, you can release those evidence if you want to. Richfield can release that footage. Richfield can release their public information, like the officer's personnel files, disciplinary actions. That's public record. We had to fight Eagan and Bloomington to receive those. Also, in addition to the car, that's- Also, in addition to the car, that's her car that she's still paying the payments on. She deserves to have that back. And as for you, Mayor, I'm specifically talking to you. You can follow the lead of Melvin Carter. We saw Billy Hughes tape released within five days. We saw Ronald Davis's tape released within nine days. I'm asking you to have some compassion, to have some empathy, all of you, because we would be here right now if it hadn't been your kids. And we are asking you, back in July, we asked Eagan and Bloomington to be that beacon of light, to be that example, to release that footage, to respect this family enough, to have some compassion, to have some regard for their demands. Because a lot of the times when our loved ones are killed, we are not in control. We weren't in control of the situation then, and we're still not in control of the situation now. So what you can do is respect the family's wishes. And you can start that by releasing the public information on these officers, their personnel files. You can do that by releasing Ashley's car back to her. You can do that by releasing the footage to the family. It's been almost four months since our brother was killed by police. We have still not seen that footage. But we saw that, as a mayor, you have that power. We know that you can release that footage to the family. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aiden. Are there any other community members that are here that would like to speak in the open forum? Any other community members that are here that would like to speak in the open forum? All right, seeing as there is nobody else here to speak in the open forum, I will close the open forum. And I will ask everyone who is able to please stand in joining us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation of Managing Fire Officer Program certificates to firefighter Shay... Shay, could you help me in saying your last name properly? And Chief Key...
Filkowski.
Filkowski.
Filkowski. Shay Filkowski.
Shay Filkowski. And Chief, I invite you and anyone else from our department that would like to join in the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, council members, firefighter Filkowski, will you join me at the podium? Firefighter, we're here tonight to recognize firefighter Filkowski because he's completed the Managing Fire Officer Program that's at the National Fire Academy held in Emmitsburg, Maryland. It's a highly selective program. It's a two-year program for emerging fire service leaders. They spend a lot of time learning about leadership management, risk reduction, and trends in the fire service. So it was a lot of work. He finished it up with a capstone project. His family's here along with him. And I would like to congratulate firefighter Filkowski.
Thank you very much, Chief, and congratulations. Any comments from council members?
Well...
Council member Garcia.
I just wanted to say, you know, sometimes, you know, we don't, we only see firefighters really when they're doing their job, when they're needed in the community. And we salute them too, because they put their lives on the line for not only us, but for our families. And in that vein too, I want to recognize the family of these firefighters who have, who really give a lot of themselves too in support of their spouse. And I'd like to appreciate and recognize them and say, you know, we're proud to have such heroes in our community.
Thank you, council member. We definitely couldn't do it without our spouses. That's definitely for sure. With that, firefighter Keith and his wife Jamie come up. Firefighter Keith is the latest firefighter in the history of Ridgefield. He's finished his probationary period. He's going to be receiving his badge tonight. A firefighter, and similar to other people in public safety, the badge is a very important symbol. It weighs on integrity, responsibility, and it reminds us of how we have to behave, whether we're on duty or off duty. The top is a phoenix that rises from the ashes, if you remember your mythology. And around the outside of the badge is an unbroken chain. That means we're always, always on duty. With that, I'm going to have Jamie pin the badge on Charlie. Charlie's a Ridgefield resident, grew up in Ridgefield, graduate of Holy Angels. And his family's been through quite the wringer in the last six months. They moved from Bismarck, bought a house, had another baby. So they're painting a lot of stuff. I know, I hear that all the time, so. Next, I'd like Lieutenant Nelson and his wife Lisa to come up. Lieutenant Nelson has finished his probation as a, for the position of lieutenant. And one of the differences on the badge from the firefighters to the lieutenant is if you look closely, they're bugles. And this is from back in the day when we didn't have radios and the firefighter would stand out front with a bugle, telling the other firefighters what to do and giving orders. Lieutenant is the first level of company officer in our department, and it's a one-bugle position. The farther you go up in the department, or in a fire department, you get additional bugles. As you can see, I have five, so I can't use all five trumpets at once. I can guarantee you that. So with that, I'm going to have Lieutenant Nelson's wife, Lisa, pin his lieutenant's badge.
And Neil, I'm wondering if we could take a quick picture with all of the council members and our firefighters that we're honoring tonight and their families. Is that fine? Yes, that would be great. Is that fine, Chief?
That's absolutely okay. Okay. Madam Mayor, if it's okay with you, we're going to bring up all of our firefighters because we are one big family.
Any comments, additional comments from council members? Council member Supple?
We'll keep this very short and sweet. Thank you all for your service. We really appreciate it.
Other council members, Garcia?
You know what I like about stuff like this is that people bring their kids. And I just met little Rosemary, who's just three weeks old, and cute as can be. And that's really nice to see a variety of folks, and when they bring their families, it makes it more special.
Thank you, Council member Garcia. Other council members? Yes, no? And again, thank you to the families for supporting your spouses and the very heroic and brave work that they do with the city of Ridgefield. And thank you always to all of our firefighters who come and support every ceremony that we have here in the council. Thank you very much for coming. So the next item is the proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I will ask the Human Rights Commission Chair Brett Strusset to come, as well as Sarah Jefferson and any other council member, or any other Human Rights Commission members that would like to come up, and community members that are here for the proclamation. Sarah Jesperson. I am just getting all the names wrong. Thank you so much for coming. Maybe before we read the proclamation and then talk a little bit about the great work that you're all doing, if you could come up and introduce yourselves, please, and share a little bit more about each of your roles.
Hi, I'm Brett Strusset. I'm Chair of the Human Rights Commission here in Ridgefield. We work to support the state Minnesota Human Rights Act and help make the community a more supportive, inclusive community.
Sarah Jesperson, Ridgefield Public Schools. I am the American Indian Education Coordinator. American Indian Education is a state and federally funded program in our school district and in many school districts around Minnesota. I work with the Parent Committee to plan different events, and they have input on the state and federal grant as well to have programming for native students here in Ridgefield.
My name is Kaylin Ross.
My name is Becca. I'm the chairperson for the Ridgefield American Indian Advisory Parent Committee. These are my three daughters, Jason, Kaylin, and Sage. And they're wearing their traditional regalia.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about your traditional regalia?
Can you tell them what kind of dancing you do?
Hello, I'm Lisa Turgeon. I am the Vice Chair of the Parent Committee for Ridgefield Public Schools.
Thank you so much for coming. So I'll read the proclamation, but then I would also really appreciate if you could share a little bit about the great work that you're doing in our community as well. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the land now known as the state of Minnesota has been home to indigenous peoples since the time immemorable, and without whom the building of the state would not have been possible. And whereas indigenous peoples have made essential contributions to the landscape of Minnesota, including traditional knowledge, experience, labor, technology, science, philosophy, industry, and the arts. And whereas indigenous people have long served as protectors and stewards of the natural environment for the benefit of all. And whereas the city of Ridgefield strives to eliminate systemic racism towards indigenous peoples and seeks to promote practices and policies that honor the state's indigenous roots, history, and contributions. And whereas the city of Ridgefield joins a growing number of government entities across the country that have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in order to promote appreciation, tolerance, reconciliation, understanding, friendship, and continued partnership among all its people. And whereas the Ridgefield Human Rights Commission supported this proclamation at its September 3rd, 2019 meeting, and recommended that the city council do the same. And now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, the Mayor of the City of Ridgefield, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Ridgefield, proclaimed this eighth day of October, 2019." So if you could please share a little bit about the work that you're doing in the schools. Every time I'm out, I hear great things that you're doing and that you've been a role model and a model for others. Work that we can be doing in our cultural communities here in Ridgefield. And I think it's a great opportunity to be sharing with the residents of Ridgefield a little bit more about your work, more about the Native American community here in Ridgefield. And maybe we can invite some folks to some events, or figure out how we can better support the work that you're doing.
So the native population in Ridgefield is a growing population. The first year I started working for the district was about three years ago. And we had around 80 students identified in the district, who are at least part American Indian, Native American. That number has grown so far. This year, we're up to about 130-ish kids district-wide. So it's definitely a growing population here in Ridgefield, and that's just who's in the school district. There's a lot more people in the community who are probably not going to Ridgefield schools or go to different schools in the community. So for the school district, I plan a lot of family cultural events that our native families are invited to. We've brought in hoop dancers. We have made Ojibwe shoulder bags. We've had a family fun bingo night where I purchased culturally relevant books to pass out. So there are lots of different community events and family events we hold. I also do a lot of classroom presentations. I do have a teaching license, and I do work with students one-on-one, especially in third grade before they're taking that MCA test. We also take our high schoolers on exclusive college visits. We just went to the Native American College Fair last Friday, and that was a lot of fun for those kids to get that experience, just going to a college fair. I'm also in charge of running the parent committee meetings, and my parents come and they volunteer to help me at events. So there's lots of different things I'm doing for the school district here in Ridgefield. And I also like to purchase a lot of different culturally relevant books for our media centers in the district.
Can you share what tribes our families here in Ridgefield are from?
Primarily Dakota and Ojibwe, which are the two largest tribes in Minnesota. I'm Blackfeet, which is a tribe from Montana. But we also have representation from tribes all over the United States. As far as down south, we have a member of the Seminole Tribe here in Minnesota. We have people from tribes out east and west. So being an urban school district, you get a lot of people from tribes all over the United States.
I have two more questions, just because this is a really great opportunity for us to all learn. So what are some of the biggest issues, needs, concerns, things that folks are excited about in the families that you work with here in Ridgefield?
The families, I've seen, when I first started, I was not in charge of my own budget. And now that I am in charge of my own budget, those grants from the state and federal Office of Indian Education, I'm able to hold a lot more fun things, like family nights. And I really have been able to connect with the native families here in Ridgefield on a more casual level when they come out, and they're able to do fun things and meet other native families in Ridgefield. And it really helps with that feeling connected to school overall. And it really helps with that feeling connected to school overall, that they have someone in school they can basically talk to about, you know, other things that may be bothering them or that they want to get off their chest. And they know that they have other native families here in Richfield who can support them or who they can befriend. Oh, go ahead.
To kind of go off of what Sarah was just saying, I grew up in Richfield as an elementary student. I was, I felt like I was probably the only native student in my classroom. We never had an Indian education program before Sarah was hired. Well, it started like about a year, and it started very small. And since Sarah has been here, she's grown this program very rapidly, and our families are meeting one another. Our students are enjoying making new friends from students from across the district. And we just want to say thank you to Sarah for all her hard work that she's done in this district to make our American Indian children see themselves in the libraries, see themselves in events. And we just want to say thank you.
And lastly, the last question that I have. What can we at the city do and us in the greater Richfield community do to support our Native American families in thriving here in Richfield?
I think a small start could be where we could maybe do some sort of celebration next year for Indigenous Peoples' Day and make that open to anybody. A lot of the times, the things I do with my families in the district due to our strict limits on the budget and who and how we can spend that money. A lot of my events that I plan for families are usually only the invites go out to native families in the district. But I think that having more community events where anyone is invited and anybody can join would be beneficial, just for getting that exposure out there and exposing people of Richfield to Native culture.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Thank you for letting us ask a few questions. It's very important that our whole community knows about the amazing work of our Native American families and that the work that you're doing in the schools to make our community better. So hopefully, the three of you can come back, and maybe you'd be interested in doing a dance performance, maybe a jingle dance or something like that. And then I don't see why we wouldn't be able to, whether it's with our Human Rights Commission, council members, or the city, or the community at large, be able to partner with you and do something community-wide to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. So thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Questions or comments from council members? Council member Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for attending. I'm really happy that this is, was on our agenda, that this is how we're going to be celebrating next Monday. I wanted two, two things. One, wanted to, and someone else up here may know more details, but wanted to let folks know that I just found out today about an event next Monday that is happening at our community center to celebrate the Indigenous peoples in our community and their history. And that is from one to two. So I plan to attend, and if someone else knows more, they can share more. But the other comment I wanted to make, I think it's really important, this proclamation, I think is wonderful and an important step. I think it does sort of gloss over some pretty terrible points in American history. And I think it's important to remember that Indigenous peoples haven't just made this state, this community possible, but that they faced a lot of oppression, coerced land treaties really being stolen from them, that were currently on Dakota land that was back in 1851, sold in a treaty that was sort of forced. They were not, they did not ever receive all of the money that they were promised for this land when it was a low price to begin with. So I think I would just encourage especially anyone else who identifies as a white person who may not know this history of this land that we now claim as ours, to take some time in this next week to look up some of that history and understand. I think, yes, we can't undo that, that yes, now we look at how we move forward together. But I think it's important to know and remember the darker parts of our history as well.
Thank you, council member Wayland. Other comments from council members? Council member Supple?
I also, wanted to also echo the thanks to Sarah, because I've seen firsthand her working with the students in the schools, and she does a fabulous job. And again, I think that we should be celebrating our Indigenous community 365 days a year and not just one. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Supple. Other members? Council member Garcia?
Well, I just, I just wanted to say too that I appreciated this proclamation, because it's, you know, right to the, to the heart of folks that have brought us along. And we appreciate your history and your, and what you've gone through. And, and, you know, look forward to continuing working with you in the community and in the schools.
Thank you, council member Garcia. Council member Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to thank Sarah, and I want to thank Brett Struza also for, and the Human Rights Commission for organizing this. And I just want to take note that we're really proud to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Days. I know 100, 150 years ago, there was religious and cultural groups that felt that they were pushed at the margins, and that's sort of the origin of the holiday. And I can't think of any better use of the day than to honor Indigenous peoples on this day. And, and I just want to invite Sarah too. We have the Richfield Foundation, as you're talking about events for the whole community. I think that's wonderful. And now is the time to apply for grants with the Richfield Foundation. A number of us sit on that board. I think we'd all support that, really supporting your work and bringing Indigenous community life closer to the center of our Richfield community life. So thank you for doing that work for all of us, and especially for our Indigenous community members. And I'm really grateful for this proclamation.
Thank you, council member Troutman. Every time we have a proclamation, I think about what are action steps that we can take to show that we do believe in the proclamations, because of course we do, but also how do we put those beliefs into action as a community and as a city? And a few things that I think about, there's several resources out there. So, and I'm very curious to see, you know, if these are things our community would be interested in. But there's a Dakota Wychan curriculum that is for sixth graders that incorporates Native American history by Native American community members here in Minnesota. And there's efforts to pass that at the state level. So that's something that can be taken, and we can look at if that's something we'd be interested in considering in Richfield, but also just within our own families. Right now, we are in the former Fort Snelling Territory area that is Native American land of the Dakota community. And right now, there's open comment for folks to participate in renaming Fort Snelling. And there's a survey that people can take. So there's a whole community information process through the Minnesota Historical Society going on right now that community members can participate in. There is a great website that's called Native American Calling, and that is a nationwide website and blog that just has a bunch of really cool historical culture, news items related to Native American culture across our country, and a lot of great videos and documentaries online. So I think one of the things is just taking the initiative to go out and attend community events, to learn more, to be proactive in learning about our Native American community, but then looking at things that we can do. So maybe looking at this curriculum, you know, one thing that we might want to consider doing here in Richfield is, is there a place where we can have a designation recognizing the land that we are on? I know other communities have flown flags of the tribes who, you know, were here on this land originally. So there's a lot of things we can do in addition to that celebration. So thank you very much for coming, and we really look forward to continuing to support your work. Thank you. And I realize that I did forget to approve the minutes, so we'll do the last presentation, and then I will go back and do the approval of the minutes. So I will pass the last presentation to council member Supple.
Thank you, Mayor Regan Gonzalez. This presentation is from the Transportation Commission, who comes here annually to tell us about their work. And Chair Wes Dunzer is going to be presenting. Before you begin, I do want to say that I want to thank the entire commission for their dedication, the great questions they ask, and the thoughtful recommendations they pass on to the council. Thank you for being here tonight.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for the opportunity to come before you and highlight the great work of the Transportation Commission over this past year. There's a lot of important issues that make the transportation of Richfield impactful on everyone, and a lot of these issues we're talking about now, and some are going to be coming up here in the future. Before I go any further into those issues, I want to recognize the members of the Transportation Commission. It's the members of the commission who are engaged with their community and are learned in width and depth of all the issues that come before them. Their willingness to speak up and offer new perspectives and challenge conventional methods is what makes this commission worthy of the pride of the city of Richfield. All commissioners are volunteers and collectively donate 264 hours of time to make Richfield the best city to live and work in. The first step that our commission does is the most important and really is the keystone to our success: we listen. The Transportation Commission takes public engagement very seriously. We actively engage with the Richfield community and strive to see and understand the issues through the experiences of citizens, especially those that will be most impacted. Although now paused, the commission hosted three open house events to listen, discuss, and actively engage with citizens on the 65th Street project, all which took place before the first half of this year. We listen at our meetings, which take place here in the Bartholomew Room on the first Wednesday of every month at 7 o'clock, and all members of the public are invited to attend and give us commissioners the opportunity to listen. As the commissioners gather information, we begin to have a firm technical grasp on the issues at hand. Our position then changes from being an analyst to being an ambassador. Commissioners push, prod, pull, and turn ideas and proposals, stretching the minds of conventional thinking of engineers and administrators. We do this with the knowledge of the firsthand perspectives we've gathered from listening. Knowing a proposal is sound only from an engineering perspective will not satisfy a transportation commissioner. The proposal must also demonstrate that all voices and perspectives have been considered and that all other possibilities have been considered. Only then, having vetted all possible options, will commissioners be willing to recommend an action be taken, and that recommendation will be the most desirable, solve the most problems, starting with the worst, within their resources and restraints at our disposal. In 2019, the Richfield Transportation Commission has been given updates on the 66th Street Project and the Lyndale Avenue Project. Each update is accompanied with questions from commissioners and often leads to a positive action taking place. In 84 short days, we will reach the end of this decade. The 2020s will be a decade of unprecedented change. Self-driving cars will have a bigger impact on the world than the automobile did on horse and buggies. The commission is dedicated and focused on understanding and anticipating new technology. The projects being carried out today must anticipate how fast things will change in the future. Uber launched nationally in 2013. By 2016, taxi services had been made obsolete. Self-driving and other technology will change everything in just a short amount of time. As we look down the road ahead, the commission is also focused and aware of the road beneath our feet. We stay updated on pavement rehab programs and voice concerns if there's a problem in the scope, speed, or quality of work. We also identify instances when a communication between residents and workers on the project crews can be improved. Looking forward to 2020, that will be a year of major transportation improvements. The most impactful will be the I-494 reconstruction, the 77th Street underpass, and 65th Street. The commission is ready, willing, and able to take on these and any other issues or areas that arise. We will continue to view transportation as a multimodal system, making sure bicyclists, pedestrians, cars, buses, and perhaps one-day drones are all included in our research and recommendations. We will speak up for our neighbors and work with engineers and administrators to look through their lens. Above all, we will continue to listen, to understand, and to advocate. Thank you for inviting me here today and for the opportunity to serve with the selfless, dedicated volunteer members of the Richfield Transportation Commission.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Are there questions or comments from council members? Council member Supple?
One thing I wanted to point out is that Richfield has been a trend center, because not many other municipalities have a transportation commission, and we've been a leader in that in the state. And I think it was a very wise decision by the people, whoever thought of it way back when, it was a good investment in community, in the community.
Thank you. Other council member questions, comments? Council member Garcia?
Well, I wanted to say to Wes, that was a great presentation, Wes. Good job. And, you know, I appreciate that you did mention the fact that you deliberate and you solicit, you know, from the community, information and suggestions. And that's really, really important, because the Transportation Commission is one of the most popular commissions that we have. And I think sometimes, you know, you wind up taking the brunt of a lot of things that, you know, that people complain about, but then, you know, you also work to, like you said, listen, come and work with our individual residents. And that's very, very appreciated. And, you know, the fact that you made your comments, I think, really, really magnified, you know, your role. Thank you.
Council member Troutman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And echoing what, what my colleagues had to say, I just want to acknowledge that I do appreciate that you're open to feedback, that you get it. You're one of the commissions that get more feedback, sometimes aggressive from our community. And even, even if you can or can't do everything, projects are usually better, because we have our community feedback almost always. And so I just want to say a special thank you, because I know that's not an easy position, and you join us as residents that have to filter that feedback and make the best recommendations and judgments. So to you and all our commissioners, I just want to say, I want to say thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you. And I also want to say thank you so much for coming and presenting. That was excellent. We are so proud of our public work staff, of our Transportation Commission. Honestly, Richfield, one of the things that we are known for is the work of our Public Works Department. Our Sweet Streets campaign has won awards and recognitions. Folks all over are looking to model what they're doing based on what we're doing here in Richfield. I had the pleasure of being invited by our engineer, Jack Bros, who did a presentation to folks from across the Twin Cities around the amazing work of the Public Works Department here in Richfield in terms of the transformation of our roads, making this community walkable, bikeable, safer for everyone, and looking into the future 40, 50, 60 years down the road, and making dramatic changes that have improved the quality of life and the safety for all Richfield residents and everyone passing through Richfield. So the work that you all do is a huge sense of pride for all of us. We know it is for you as well. We thank you for the leadership, for your leadership. And as council member Troutman said, we know that it is not easy. We have been in a lot of those meetings with you, and we know it's tough, and everyone conducts himself so great with community. And we're very, very proud of everything our Public Works Department does in our Transportation Commission. So thank you for supporting us and being the leaders in the metro area. All right, now going back to the approval of the minutes of the concurrent City Council HRA Planning Commission Work Session for September 24, 2019, and the City Council Meeting Minutes for September 24, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. All right, hats off to hometown hits. I will start with council member Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have much. I just returned from vacation, but I did want to acknowledge that all the council did attend the School Board Forum. And, you know, it was a surprisingly strong presentation by all the candidates. It's, there's, there's six candidates, and there's three seats up for election. And I would urge for you to, you know, look at the, at the League of Women Voters presentation and of the forum, either on YouTube or on the Channel 15. But it was very rewarding and not- But uh i- it was very rewarding, and that the turnout was just horrific. It it almost filled this whole chamber, and uh appreciate all of the folks that, that take its, take the School Board race seriously. Then I also wanted to talk, to thank Councilmember Simon Troutman, because I I viewed the um tape of the City Council three times, just to make sure that, you know, that I was satisfied with his presentation, and and, you know, and I think he was very calm. I think he was very professional, and you know, I'm, I would just, I did notice, though, that you had some beads of perspiration.
He's always nervous as well.
Yeah, and so, but I, but I thought that you really handled it well, and and I give you a shout out. You know, you're not as good as moi, but, but but you certainly have done an outstanding job.
Well, thank you, Congress, or uh Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, and we will pass it to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, I just have uh two, two hats off. One, this Thursday, um, we're talking about the uh the Richfield Foundation a little bit earlier. We have our annual wine tasting event. We partner with our our local municipal liquor stores. We have literally hundreds and hundreds of wines and beers and spirits, um, but certainly hundreds of wines, and it's a great event, great opportunity to connect with lots of people, to support um charities and uh and folks that are doing great work, just like tonight, uh throughout the Richfield community, so um come, enjoy yourself, uh enjoy the raffle. If you can't, or if you you don't consume alcohol, consider sending a check to the Richfield Foundation, uh because the more, the more money that comes in um in the next, in the next week or so, the the more we can really just encourage great work in our community. Uh, so that's the the wine tasting event this Thursday, and um and then second, um, October twenty-seventh, for family members or for for families with children, um, at Wood Lake Nature Center, there's a costume party and scavenger hunt, and it's great fun, and the staff loves it. Uh, my kids love it every year. Um, it's free or reduced for members, so um, but you you um you are encouraged to uh to register ahead ahead of time so you can get your tickets. Um, so you can go to the the city website or the Richfield Wood Lake Nature Center website. It's October twenty-seventh, uh kiddos and costumes, lots of fun, and if you haven't considered becoming a member of the 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 Fowl, the Friends of Wood Lake Nature Center, I'd really encourage folks to do that if you if you ever walk around there, if you ever just have a good feeling knowing that Wood Lake's there, which, and I know there are residents, we have a lot of parks, love all our parks, there's great wildlife everywhere, but there's just a lot of programming and a lot of opportunities at Wood Lake, so consider uh becoming a friend of Wood Lake.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two things for me. Um, one, thank you to everyone who attended one of the Ice Arena Refrigeration Project Sessions. Uh, we got some good community feedback on that upcoming work, um, and I think we'll be uh at our next meeting or soon, making some decisions on that, but um again, back to the importance of of getting that community input, so thank you to everyone who participated there. Um, and then second, just wanted to lift up, I had an opportunity to meet with um some of the folks who are part of the newer expanding after-school programs in the Richfield Public Schools this year, uh through the the District and Beacons and the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA are all partnering together. They got some grant money, um, and just some really truly exciting uh opportunities this year. I'm really um looking forward to see how that goes, and I know that's a, gonna be meeting a big need in town, so definitely a hats off to everyone working on that initiative.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. Um, first, I'd like to start off by thanking all the people that opened up their homes for the renovation celebration and to the volunteers and the staff members that were there. It was a great um opportunity to see what we could do, and a lot of the programs were highlighted, and we saw some great ideas. There were six homes that were opened up, so thank you to all those people. Um, then I have three fall events that are coming up. On Saturday, October twelfth, the Grape Pumpkin Giveaway is going on at Fairwood Park from ten to noon, so if you're interested in getting a pumpkin, it's a great opportunity. Um, then, on October nineteenth, from two to six P.M., there's a Half-Haunted Halloween going on at Wood Lake Nature Center, and it takes about an hour and a half to go through the program, so that it would help if um you planned ahead for that. So it goes from two to six, but the last people won't be leaving until about seven-thirty, and it's a five-dollar cost. And then, um, I'm the liaison to the Richfield Arts Commission, and they're gonna be participating in the Community Trunk or Treat that's being sponsored by Morris Nielsen Funeral Chapel. That's a free family event on, also on October nineteenth from five to seven, and for those of you that are interested in attending, they're trying to fill a hearse with donations for Veep, so please bring your donations for Veep. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Supple. And in addition to all of the exciting events going on in Richfield, we have another fun, exciting thing happening this fall, and that is our flu shots. Please get your flu shot. Um, so there are so many flu shots in Richfield, so many flu shot clinics in Richfield, in Edina, in Bloomington, um, around our community, so there is one um on Saturday, October twelfth, from nine to noon at United Methodist Church of Peace at sixty-three forty-five Xerxes Avenue in Richfield. Um, and if you go to our website, there is a long list of other community flu shot clinics that you can go to, so hopefully you're able to make one of those clinics. Um, and then lastly, I just want to give a big thank you to the former president of the Richfield Chamber of Commerce, Ann Schultz. Um, she has retired or resigned or moved on from her position at the Richfield Chamber of Commerce, and it was um very sad to to lose her in that position. She's been an excellent partner to myself, but to this community, and to all of our businesses, um, and has just had such great leadership, um, so it's a huge loss for our community, and we are also very excited to welcome the new president of the Chamber of Commerce, B.J. Scook, who is a leader, a great leader, um, here in the Richfield community, who formerly worked at Hope Church, but just is well-connected to all different facets of the city of Richfield in our community, and is um new to the position and has been working, um, he was previously working with Ann at the Chamber, so um he isn't coming in completely new, but has already that strong connection with the Chamber, so we look forward to working with him. Um, and he and I will continue, we're gonna start our conversations back up, um, and this year, in the hopes of having a successful state of the city or state of the community. Unfortunately, last year, um, we had to cancel it three times, and I gave up because we um ended up booking them during the multiple days of the polar vortex, and then we decided nothing is gonna happen in April, we'll be fine to do it in April, and of course, we scheduled it for the one day where there was ice and snow in April, and we didn't want people to come out and hurt themselves, so um we will be trying again, and and that's a great partnership that we're excited for, so thank you to B.J. and thank you so much to Ann for her service to this community. Okay, the next um item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The next item is a consent calendar, and that goes to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Item A is consider approval of the Master Grant Contract for Community Health Boards with the Minnesota Department of Health. This contract is effective January first, 2020, through December thirty-first, 2024. Item B, consider approval to purchase two MT trackless tractors with V-plow and snowblower attachments from McQueen Equipment, Inc., in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-ninety thousand and seventy-seven dollars. And I submit these two items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the Councilmembers? Yep, Councilmember Wayland?
Um, just a quick one on the the snow um, snow tractors, that I I really appreciate uh the the staff report on this reminded me of all the good work that our Public Works Department did last year in working with community members to update our our snow removal policies and and recognize that for for our residents who don't have a car, uh the the couple days after a large snow can be just really challenging, and um making sure to to update some of our priorities and make sure that the the sidewalks get um get plowed, and so I appreciate uh that work last year and the um the new purchases to make that happen.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
The consent calendar has been approved. The next item, um, we have a list of public hearings, so I just split this up between all of us. So the first public hearing goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a public hearing in consideration for a resolution adopting the assessment for weed elimination from private property and removal or elimination of public health or safety hazards from private property. Uh, Minnesota state statutes provide that a city may levy a special one-year assessment for the elimination of public health or safety hazards or the elimination of weeds from private properties. The special assessments are based on costs incurred by the city in connection with the abatement of weeds or public health or safety hazards on certain properties in the city which are not properly maintained. The owners of the subject properties are notified by the city to take corrective action with regard to the issue with the property. If the specific property issues are not abated within a proper time limit, the city would take corrective action necessary and bill the property owner. In all cases, property owners have been notified that any unpaid charges or fees may be assessed against the property. Uh, so we're going to conduct, excuse me, uh, conduct a public hearing uh by motion, and uh so, uh, do we make the motion and then have the comments, uh, Mayor, or is uh our city attorney, or do we have the public comment period now?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Troutman, just go ahead and open the public hearing and take comment, and then close it after the public hearing is completed.
Thank you. Uh, so this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to come up and speak about uh about the motion and about the assessments? It's a public hearing, are there any comments? This is the shot. All right, I think somebody else has to move to close the hearing.
I'll move to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed.
Uh, the public hearing uh being closed, uh, I would um, I would move that we approve the attached resolution adopting the assessment for weed elimination from private property and removal or elimination of public health or safety hazards from private property.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, so this is now a public hearing in consideration of a resolution to adopt the special assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees against private property. Richfield City Code and City Charter allow the city to specially assess delinquent false alarm user fees against the respective properties. State statutes provide that the city may levy a special one-year assessment for these costs. Unpaid alarm user fees must be paid to the city within thirty days from the date of written notice by the city to the alarm user. Fees not paid within the time specified will be subject to a ten percent penalty charge. The special assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees assessed to private properties provides a means for the city to recover costs incurred with the response by public safety to an alarm call on certain properties in the city that turns out to be false. In all cases, property owners have been notified that any unpaid charges or fees may be assessed against the property. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would wish to speak, and I'd ask that you approach the podium? This is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak?
I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed.
So with that, I would move a resolution to adopt the special assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees against private property.
Any que- um comments, questions from Council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you. The next item is Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This is now a public hearing in consideration of a resolution adopting special assessments for unpaid vacant property registration fees against private property. Minnesota state statutes and this Richfield City Code provide that the city may levy a special one-year assessment for the unpaid regis- registration of vacant property. The special assessments are based on the fee required by a property owner to register vacant property. The owners of the subject properties are notified by the city of the unpaid registration fee. If the fee remains unpaid, the property owners are notified that any unpaid charges or fees may be assessed against the property. So we're going to open up the public hearing, and if you wish to speak, please approach the podium. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed.
Then I will move a resolution adopting special assessments for unpaid vacant property registration fees against private property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you very much. The next item is Councilmember Garcia's.
And this is, of course, is another public hearing of a resolution authorizing certification of delinquent utility bills to be collected with property taxes. So are there any, is there anyone that wishes to s- speak on this issue, or should I go to do the description?
Yep, if you just want to read the description first.
Okay. Minnesota state statute four forty-four, uh, point zero seven five and four twenty-nine point one zero one, in chapter seven of the Richfield Code of Ordinances, provides that unpaid water, sanitary sewer, stormwater, and street light charges may be certified to the county auditor to be included in a property owner's annual property tax bill. The city code also authorizes a certification fee to be charged against each delinquent account, certifying the delinquent charges to the property taxes. The city is assured of collecting the charges. The pen- the pending delinquent twenty-nineteen utility charges total four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars, seven hun- sev- seven twenty-one and ninety-eight cents for seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven accounts. This amount does not include the fifty-dollar certification fee that will be added to each Anybody want to speak to that? Anybody want to speak to this important hearing? Anybody?
I move we close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed.
Okay, so therefore, I will move the resolution authorizing certification of delinquent utility bills to be collected with property taxes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, this is a public hearing. Sorry, this readjusted to a smaller font. This is a public hearing in consideration for a resolution adopting the assessment for the removal of diseased trees from private property, uh, work ordered from January one eighteen through December thirty-one, uh, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, healthy trees uh within municipal limit- limits is threatened by uh shade uh shade trees, uh tree diseases, and it's the city's responsibility to control, prevent the spread of these diseases. If the city deemed it necessary to remove a diseased tree on private property, the property owners have three options available: remove the tree themselves, hire and pay their own contractor, or hire their own contractor and request the cost of the tree be removed and assessed against their property tax. In the per- in the period from January one, two thousand and eighteen, through December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen... In the per- in the period from January one, two thousand and eighteen through December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, sixteen property owners chose the third option. The total amount assessed is forty-one thousand, three hundred, seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here, uh, to speak on this matter? Anyone here like to speak on this matter?
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed.
Then I would move, uh, an approval of the resolution adopting the assessment of removal of diseased trees from the private property for work ordered from January one, two thousand and eighteen through December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved. Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. The next item is a public hearing in consideration of resolutions adopting the annual Lindell-Hub Nicolet Maintenance District Assessment and Proposed Work for twenty twenty. The Lindell-Hub Nicolet Maintenance Assessment was established to recover special maintenance expenses in the LHN, which is the Lindell-Hub Nicolet area in nineteen eighty-one. The current services include maintenance and operation of irrigation, weed control, mowing, trash and litter removal, maintenance of street lighting systems, fence maintenance. The LHN redevelopment area is approximately bounded by sixty-fourth Street, First Avenue, Sixty-seventh Street and Emerson Avenue. For twenty eighteen work, the large fence separating residential properties from commercial properties along First Avenue South from Sixty-sixth Street to Sixty-fifth Street was replaced, contributing significantly to the twenty eighteen assessment total. This is a public hearing, is anybody here, um, to comment on this item? This is a public hearing, is anyone here to, um, comment on this item? Would someone like to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed. Um, I would like to make the motion to adopt a resolution ordering the undertaking of the current service project within the Lindell-Hub Nicolet District of twenty twenty.
Sec- second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, I just wanna comment, I talked a lot with staff about this and I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're gonna be revisiting this maintenance district in a upcoming work session. I think, uh, the specific project that upped these costs is kind of a good example of that this, this may not be the best, the, the avenue that best serves this area, um, given the, the current, um, I know, the, it's been around for a while and I think, um, it's time to revisit this. So I'm excited that we'll be, uh, taking a closer look and seeing if there are some alternatives going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. The next public hearing goes to Councilmember, oh, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. There is one other resolution that you need to adopt, it's the first one in the...
Oh, sorry about that, you're right. Okay, so I'm gonna go back and adopt a resolution adopting the assessment. Let's see, yeah, no, we haven't done that one yet. Okay, um, adopt a resolution, I would like to make the motion to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment of the Lindell-Hub Nicolet District for costs incurred, um, to maintain the area for twenty eighteen. Thank you for noticing that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been adopted, has been approved. Thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Yes, this is a public hearing to consider resolutions adopting the annual Interstate Lindell-Nicolet Project Area Assessment and Proposed Work for twenty twenty. The, um, this project area assessment was established to recover special maintenance expenses in the Seventy-seventh Street area in nineteen eighty-eight. The current services include maintenance and operation of irrigation systems, weed control, mowing, fertilization, trash and litter removal and replantings. These current services are provided on both sides of the Seventy-seventh Street wall. The maintenance functions are funded through a maintenance assessment on Seventy-seventh Street commercial properties. So this is a public hearing, if anyone would wish to speak, please approach the podium now. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed.
Uh, with that, I would, and can I make both of these motions at once or should I? Okay. I would, uh, move to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment on the ILN project area for costs incurred to maintain the area for twenty eighteen and, uh, to adopt a resolution ordering the undertaking of the current service project within the ILN project area for twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. The next item for consideration is a violation hearing in consideration of a resolution regarding civil enforcement for establishments that recently underwent alcohol compliance checks conducted by Richfield Public Safety Staff and failed by selling alcohol to underage youth. Richfield Public Safety Staff conducted phase one of the alcohol compliance checks for twenty nineteen. These checks are done to determine the availability of alcohol to underage youth and to meet state statute. There are currently thirty-three establishments that hold licenses to sell alcohol in Richfield. Compliance checks were conducted at thirty-one establishments. Two establishments were closed at the time the checks were conducted. Four of the thirty-one establishments sold alcohol to an underage youth. The action being taken today is for civil enforcement and penalties against those establishments. One, Devani's, Inc., doing business as Devani's Pizza and Hot Hoagies located at sixty-three forty-five Penn Avenue South. Two, Richfield Municipal Liquor Store doing, number two, doing business as Cedar Liquor Store located at sixty-six hundred Cedar Avenue South. Three, Northern Tier Retail LLC, doing business as Speedway, number four, one eight eight, located at seventy-seven twenty Nicolet Avenue South. And four, Northern Tier Retail, doing business as Speedway, number four, six, one, five, located at eight twenty-six West Sixty-sixth Street. This is the fourth alcohol compliance check failure for Devani's, doing business as Devani's Pizza and Hot Hoagies located at sixty-three forty-five Penn Avenue South. Previous failures occurred on July fourteenth, two thousand and one, December third, two thousand and three, and October eighteenth, two thousand and seven. Since their last alcohol compliance check failure in two thousand and seven and this date, they have been able to pass enough executive compliance checks to place them back at step one level of discipline. This is the first alcohol compliance check failure for the Richfield Municipal Liquor Store, number two, doing business as Cedar Liquor Store located at sixty-six hundred Cedar Avenue South. They have no previous failures. This is the sixth failure for the Northern Tier Retail LLC, doing business as Speedway, number four, one, eight, eight, located at seventy-seven twenty Nicolet Avenue South. Previous failures occurred on March fourth, nineteen ninety-nine, November seventeenth, nineteen ninety-nine, December third, two thousand and three, November ninth, two thousand and four, and October sixteenth, two thousand and eight. Since their last alcohol compliance check failure in two thousand and eight and to this date, they have been able to pass enough consecutive successful compliance checks to place them back at step one level of discipline. This is the third failure for Northern Tier Retail LLC, doing business as Speedway, number four, six, one, five, located at eight twenty-six West Sixty-sixth Street. Previous failures occurred on August seventh, two thousand, December fourth, two thousand and two, and December fourth, two thousand and two. Since their last alcohol compliance check failure in two thousand and two and this date, they have been able to pass enough consecutive successful compliance checks to place them back at step one level of discipline. The establishments will be given an opportunity to either admit they made an unlawful sale to a minor and agree to the penalties imposed by the City Council or deny the allegations and request a consent, uh, contested case hearing. If they admit to the violation, the council will adopt a resolution imposing the penalties. If they deny the allegations and request a contested case hearing, the City Council will refer the matter to an independent hearing examiner. They will be notified of the date of the hearing and will be provided the opportunity to present evidence to rebut the city's evidence. For first-time violators, Public Safety recommends the City Council follow the guidelines set forth in Resolution number nine, five, one, one, which are to suspend the license to sell alcohol for five days and pay a one-thousand-dollar fine, to require a meeting with the Public Safety Director uh, to present a written action plan to ensure elimination of future failures and require the manager to attend an alcohol compliance and sales awareness presentation conducted by a private firm approved by Public Safety with all costs to be paid by the establishment. Richfield Liquor Store, number two, doing business as Cedar Liquor Store located at sixty-six hundred Cedar Avenue has accepted all penalties. The store's liquor license was suspended from September first through the fifth, resulting in a full closure for five days and the one-thousand-dollar fine was paid on September, uh, thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Um, so before we continue, I just wanna ask if there's any additional comments from, from staff on this item?
Um, Mayor, just as part of this process and hearing tonight, um, this would be the time, if any of the establishments wish to contest or deny the allegations at issue, that this would be the time to let us know that, um, before the council takes action on the resolutions tonight.
Thank you very much. Is anybody here from those establishments who would like to contest, um, contest or make their case? No, could, could you please explain that, City Attorney?
Um, Mayor and Council, certainly, stat- any representative can come up and speak to the council about the issue at hand. Um, if, if you wish to, um, accept and, and agree to the violations, that's fine. The council will then, um, take action on the resolutions. Um, but if any establishment wishes to contest it, we just need to know that.
So if you would like, you could come up if you, if you want, or you don't have to. Oh, yes, so please come up, um, sign your name and address and then share your name and address too before you speak. Thank you.
As said, I am the general manager at Devani's at sixty-three forty-five Penn. Um, we had a situation where we were tested, um, and one of my employees failed. He, he checked the ID and somehow made a mistake and, and so, and, and rang it up for the, um, individual. So, we have done a lot of training since then. We've had a really good program in place and it failed. But, um, we've retrained all of our staff, we've reintroduced all of the new IDs to our staff. So we've done a lot of training, it's at the top of everybody's mind. It may turn out to be a positive situation because everybody is really aware of, of checking IDs and being super conscientious about making the same. Okay?
Thank you so much for coming and if you could sign your information in, thank you. Is anybody else here from any of the establishments listed who would like to contest, um, the violations? All right, um, I will ask the council to make and second the motion and then I'll open it up for council questions or comments. What was that? Oh, yeah, um, sorry, I guess I can make, I will make the motion. Um, I will make the motion to approve the attached resolutions regarding civil enforcement for Devani's, doing business as Devani's Pizza, Hot Hoagies, um, located at sixty-three forty-five Penn Avenue South. Richfield Municipal Liquor Store, number two, doing business as Cedar Liquor Store located at sixty-six hundred Cedar Avenue South. Northern Tier Retail LLC, doing business as Speedway, number forty-one eighty-eight, located at seventy-seven twenty Nicolet Avenue South. And Northern Tier Retail LLC, doing business as Speedway, number four, six, one, five, located at eight twenty-sixth West Sixty-sixth Street. These establishments failed alcohol compliance checks by selling alcohol to an underage youth.
Second.
All right, um, any questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Troutman?
I, I just wanted to make a, a brief comment. I, um, the, Devani's is in my, is in my ward and, um, four generations of Troutmans have enjoyed pizza there. Um, and I just wanted to appreciate, um, we, we did have a chance to speak and just how, just how sincerely, uh, and serious they took, they took this, uh, this lapse. And especially for the, the young man who I understand just feels terribly about this. And so we wish him every success, uh, as, as he, um, as he walks through this. Um, but I also, um, just wanted to, uh, so I just wanted to acknowledge that just the, the earnestness and just how top of mind it was, uh, in their, in their culture. And, um, I just had a, a question, when it comes to the five days, is there any flexibility of which five days does the, does the, the establishment have an opportunity to work that out with the city? Great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Other questions or comments from council members?
I'll have a quick comment. Um, you know, I hope that next time around that we have zero violations. That's what we have to really, but I appreciate the fact that when you, when you spoke, that you did mention the training and, uh, you know, and putting your staff through the ID and the whole works. Because that's really very important. It takes, I mean, to, to not get income for five days, you know, and not have patronage of your, of your store for five days and a thousand-dollar fine, that's, that's steep. And I think one, at the one time that it's done, it's, you know, fine. But I think when it's a repeated, uh, violations, I think that's something that's serious.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Other council members? Nope? All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved. Thank you. The next item is the City Manager's Report, which goes to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. And the last item before we adjourn is Claims and Payroll and we all know that that goes to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, I, uh, again, I, you know, I want you to know that, uh, that I have really done my, my job in reviewing the Claims and Payroll. And, um, I'm just hats off to staff, uh, because they constantly are, are right on i- in terms of, um, of their paperwork and their reports. So I will move Claims and Payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and Payroll has been moved and with that, I adjourn this meeting.